All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please. Thank you for being here tonight. Starting with the opening prayer, Barry, will you do that for us, please? Thank you.
We thank you for this day, thank you for this wonderful city that we live in. We ask that you give us wisdom as we conduct the city's business this evening, and we ask it in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you very much. Zach, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Kerr?
Here.
Longmire?
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
That is... Eight present, one absent.
Thank you. All right. Agenda items, this.
Yeah, we do have public comments.
Is this for this one?
Yeah. Shakir? Shakir Hussein.
All right. Okay, we have public comments, agenda items only, and we have one person named Shakir Hussein.
Oh, my apologies, I thought we just had to sign in.
Okay. All right. You don't wanna get up and speak? You got a wide-open podium.
I appreciate it.
We'd love to hear from you.
Well, it's great to have you here.
Well, thank you. Fossil arm. All right. Next on the agenda, the minutes from April the 1st. Do I have a motion? Has everyone had time to read them? Has everybody seen them? All right.
Can I make just a quick move?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I will just note, they are corrected, but what you had in your packets originally had Commissioner Kerr's name incorrectly spelled. So that is corrected, I just wanted to, just to make sure everybody was aware of that.
All right.
Thank you.
And if you were to go back to the packets, you'll see the corrected ones in there, so everyone could always go back and revisit and see that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Okay, I heard Wendy on the motion, and I heard a second from Mr. Martin. Thank you. Can I do this by a roll call, or do I have to do it by?
You can do it by a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please. It's up to you, Zach.
Approved with nine yeses.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, and just wanna go on the record and make sure everybody knows, after the roll call, Ms. Longmire arrives, so we have a full committee tonight. Thank you. All right, next, we have development plans, and the first one on the agenda is Falcon Ridge Final Development Plan Amendment. The location is 800 New Shackle Island Road, parcel 138-041.00. The planning staff person is Caitlin, and Caitlin, will you tell us about this, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Falcon Ridge is currently owned by American Homes for Rent. The applicant, Ryan Holmes, is seeking to purchase the development, but is requesting the proposed changes prior to finalizing the purchase. The preliminary plan was approved in May of 2014 for 103 single-family homes. The residential design guidelines were established with the following. Building materials, all the homes must be constructed of brick or hardy siding with stone or stucco accents. The garage design was up to 70 percent of the homes may feature front-loaded carriage-style garages. These garages must be recessed 10 feet from the front facade and occupy less than 50 percent of the facade. There was 50-foot and 60-foot lots, along with 95-foot and 125-foot lots. The final development plan was approved in June of 14. The FDP had one amendment, and that was on the 50-foot and 60-foot lots, that the minimum, the two-story homes would be a minimum of 1,800 square feet with at least 1,000 square feet on the lower level. The preliminary plat was approved in August of 2014, then renewed in September of 2017, and granted a final extension in November of 19. Phase 1 final plat development, further development came forward in 2020 and was approved, and then again in '22 for an extension. The final plat for Phase 1 has not been recorded as of yet. The applicant, Ryan Holmes, is proposing minor amendments to the final development plan. It is contingent upon the purchase of their development. The primary amendment is requesting the removal of the requirement for, that the front-loaded garages be recessed a minimum of 10 feet from the front of the house and be replaced with garages not to extend beyond the front porch. Ryan Holmes is also incorporating the additional requirements into the development plan. Any lots that are, or all lots that are over 80 feet in width must have a side-loaded or rear-entry garage. All 50-foot lots must include a front porch, and the minimum square footage for all two-story homes on 50-foot lots is increased from 1,600 square feet to 1,800 square feet. And that's all I have.
All right. So, to the committee, are there any questions that you have of Caitlin? Any discussions that you want? Anything? Go ahead.
Um, these are the, this is the property that the homes were gonna be built and then leased, leased out and not sold, correct?
Originally, that's what we understand.
Okay, so procedurally, the new owner is going to sell the homes and not lease them?
We don't know that for certain.
There is a representative there. Yeah, let's talk about that.
Yeah, we...
Because that may, that will change our discussion with you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry, will you say your name, where you're from, and your address? Thank you.
Absolutely, so Zach Beatty with Ryan Holmes. Thank you all for allowing us to be here today to review this. So our business model is we do not build rentals at all. This is all directly for purchase, and it's not even a model to where we don't even necessarily, not even just build like a community out. We actually don't even allow for individuals, investors, to purchase our homes as well either. So we would be building this directly for purchase for end-users.
All right. Would you be amenable to having a stipulation attached to the comments as we, as we run, after we run through them?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to give you some context of how we're structuring this deal, is all of these amendments that are proposed have to be approved by the current owner, American Homes for Rent. Their problem with that is that if we do that, and for some reason we don't go through with the purchase or the sale, they could then be, you know, stuck with a revision that wouldn't allow them to do their normal business model. There are several other things in this that I would've loved to have add, like minimum square footage. The smallest we're gonna build is gonna be 2,700 square feet. Quite frankly, it's a very expensive site, and where our outpricing needs to be, we need to have a larger square footage. You know, I mean, all of our 95 and 125 lots, those are all gonna have sidecar entry garages as well, too. But at the same time, while I would love to put these in, I could not get approval from American Homes for Rent to allow for us to make that.
Okay. And what you're asking for is what you've already talked with them about?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, we have approval from American Homes for Rent. They had to, I believe, sign the FDP request, and yes, it has been approved by them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Michael.
Yeah, welcome.
Mr. Hardwick, go ahead.
So, my question is for staff. Can we approve something that would be pending their purchase? And if they don't purchase it, then it just goes away?
Yeah, yeah.
If they moved?
Yeah, we could put it contingent upon this particular buyer, you know, buying the property with the request of the removal of the 10-foot garage setback. So you could make it dependent upon this applicant purchasing, purchasing the property. So you could do that.
So if there are things that you want that we can give you that makes it better for us as well, and then they just go away if you don't purchase the property?
Sure, I completely understand your point, and I brought these up with American Homes for Rent. They reached out to their legal, and, you know, basically, they're telling me that it's my word against, you know, that this is something that would be valid. They asked for a letter from, you know, the city of Hendersonville's attorney stating this, and I didn't really think that was something that was gonna be a reasonable request to do. So I've made all of these, all of these pleas with American Homes for Rent, but they're unwilling to move, to move on that as far as a concession allowing us to put it in.
I think one of the things that could be an option is if, if this is favorable and passes tonight, and then, then you move forward on closing on the property, once you have full control of the property, if there are things that you feel that would make the subdivision in the development better, as the commissioner said, then we certainly would welcome you to come back when you have full ownership and not to hesitate to request anything that would make the development better. Is that...
Sure.
So, so that's a, that's a possibility as well.
Sure.
We wanna be, we, if this is good for the community, and it's good for you, and we're all gonna end up with a better product, we'd love to have that discussion with you.
Sure. And to be quite frank, I mean, that, that's exactly what I think we're proposing, allowing us to remove this garage requirement. It's going to allow us to put a larger product on this site. We're kind of pigeonholed it on those 50-foot lots. It's just too narrow to do a side, a side entry. You know, we could put a garage in the rear of the home, but again, that's gonna eat into usable backyard space as well. So, you know, essentially, we would be going from really probably an 18,000 to 2,000 square-foot product to a minimum of probably 28, upwards of 3,600 square feet. This is gonna allow us to have owners on the main floor. It's also gonna allow us to have guest rooms on the main floor with a full bathroom, which is something our, our owners have showed great interest in, especially with multi-generational families, having elderly parents or relatives living in the home. And then also, too, increasing, you know, the minimum square footage requirements, you know, we feel that, you know, it is a big net positive to the community, not just our needs as a builder.
And, and...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And if I can mention one other thing, from, from the staff standpoint, we looked at this whole thing, there, there's several old, old developments that have this 10-foot setback for the garage, and to me, we could not really figure out what the real benefit was. I think maybe back years ago, the concern was probably having more kinda snout-nose garages that, that really protruded in front of the house, and maybe just wanted to be careful that nothing, you know, did that. But recessing at 10 feet back, especially on a 50-foot lot, gets you kind of a odd-looking, odd-looking home where you've got the garage portion setting back, you know, quite a bit further than that front. So I, we, from the staff standpoint, we really couldn't quite figure out what the value was on that, because it's, it's not even, because we thought about it from a parking standpoint. It's like, well, would that get you two additional parking spaces? And it wouldn't, because it's just 10 feet, so that's not enough, you know, that's probably, that's not enough to fit more cars in the, in the parking area as well, so. I just wanted to share that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Berry.
So I have one last question for staff. So, we make the approval tonight of what these guys are requesting. If for whatever reason their transaction does not happen, are we okay with this, with the current owner?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah, it would make sense with the current owner.
Okay.
Or any of the other owners, actually, so. Wendy, you have something?
Yes, thank you for being here, and I've wondered for a long time what was happening up on that hill with no visibility. I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you said about the home size. So you're, you said your smallest home is gonna be 2,700 square feet, and then you said 2,800 to 3,600. Is that still the same number of houses? You're just putting larger houses on the lot? So what is the smallest lot size that, that's gonna hold one of these houses?
Yeah, great question. So we're not making any amendment to the lot sizes. We still believe that 103 is the feasible number. There is some value engineering that we can do on the site that will give us some basement lots and cut down the cost, because, I mean, quite frankly, it's an expensive site. It's beautiful, I mean, there's gorgeous views, but there's a lot of rock on top of that hill, and especially when you look at wetland credits and the A-Wrap to go with it. So the lot sizes would still remain the same, but by doing this amendment, it would allow us to put a much larger product on the 50-foot lots. And quite frankly, one, that's what I think the city of Hendersonville, like that's what is selling here, you know, from our aspect. And then also, two, it's quite frankly what needs to be put to make this deal pencil. If I have an 1,800-square-foot home on there, the economics of where the outpricing would have to be, it's just not gonna be very feasible for, for an owner. And to clear up any kind of discretion between the minimum square footages, 1,800 square feet is the maximum that I could get American Homes to rent to go in and, and allow us to do, but all of my models and performers that I'm building out, arts are green wood, which is, I think, 2,789 is the size of it. That's the smallest floor plan that we'll be putting in there. And some of those 125-foot lots, I mean, they very well could get up close to 6,000 square feet when you account for a basement.
And on, thank you for that. And on the, the one-story homes, if American Homes for Rent was sort of tying you down to a smaller footprint for the two-story, is the same, the case for the 1,200-square-foot minimum size on the one story, or is that about where you're thinking you're gonna stay?
Yeah, great question. We haven't asked for any amendments regarding the one stories, because quite frankly, I don't think we'll build any. I, I think they're all, are gonna be two stories. But again, with allowing us to do that garage modification, it's gonna allow us to offer bedrooms on the main floor and/or an additional guest room on the main floor as well, too. So is this, this is my slide? So just to kinda give you some examples of, of some of our products that we're doing, you know, just to keep you high-level, I don't wanna, you know, keep y'all here all night and bore you with stuff, but, you know, Ryan Holmes, we're the largest home builder in middle Tennessee, we're the fourth-largest in the nation. We do about 1,200 homes. We've done about 12,000 homes just in Tennessee since we've been operating. This is a picture of enormity, so this is actually something we would build potentially on our 95 and 125 lots as well. Everything you see in this slide is an actual product that we would be looking at building at Falcon Ridge. Here's our list of our active communities. As you can see, we're, we're very prominent throughout the middle Tennessee region. Ryan Holmes is it. We're not a spec builder. We actually don't even start building a home until the client has purchased it, so that'll let them pick the lot, the floor plan, and the interior and exterior design options. It's also good to note that we even have our own internal continuity rules. We don't allow the same elevation or the same color to be built across or adjacent, so diversity within a community is actually very important for us. And we are not a build-to-rent company as well, as mentioned, just an oversight of the map. So, the other nice thing, too, that we're looking at doing, on those 50-foot lots on the far east side of the plot, we could actually probably remove those alleys and make those frontloads as well, which would allude to a much nicer backyard for both of those lots, too, and then really, you know, open up just a lot more green space throughout the community. You know, again, the, what I'm requesting is just the garage setback. This is an example of one of our Seneca floor plans. This without a basement is right at 3,300 square feet, and so you can see the garage, it doesn't proceed beyond that front porch, it's, it's parallel in line with it. Again, this is an example floor plan. I think this is that Seneca floor plan as well, sorry, this is a York floor plan, so we have the option to do a full bedroom with a full bathroom on the main floor. This is our green wood, which would allow you to have an owners on the main floor. Again, too, you can see that where that, that porch would not be extended beyond the, I'm sorry, the garage would not be extended upon the front porch. And then, too, you know, things that we could get Ryan, or excuse me, AMH bought in on was, you know, the amendments we had requested. And then, the benefit to the community, again, this will have larger homes, which I think is best for the community, it's gonna increase tax revenue, because you'll have a higher out price. Again, owners on the main floor, better backyards and guest rooms on the main floor as well.
And, thank you. Just one other question. How many floor plans are you going to make available?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, I would say if you are not accounting for basements, which I think quite a few of these will have that as an option, we are probably looking at, I would say, six to eight floor plans would be, would be commendable in this product line.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Todd, you got anything?
Yes, quick question. What's the average width of these lots?
The average width?
Just, yeah, an average.
So if you were to take like a blended average of adding... So I'm gonna say you're probably, I don't, I don't have a definite answer, but the breakup is you're going to have, I believe it is 32 50-foot lots, and then I believe there's, everything else is, I think there's around 32, you know what, actually, I have the blend right here. I can tell you... So of the 50-foot lots in question, there's only 23 of them. So essentially, this amendment's only, you know, looking at about a quarter of the entire community. The 65-foot lots will have, there'll be 42 of them, there'll be 32 95-foot lots, and six lots will be 125 feet.
Second question. If, if two adjacent homes max out on square foot, say the 3,600, 3,800 that you mentioned, how many feet between the houses are we talking about?
So we won't affect the minimum building setback at all.
So the, the space goes up, not out?
It goes, it goes up, and then it also goes...
Deeper.
Deeper, yes, yeah. And then some of it has to do with, kind of like the, the fill of the homes, too. So like, you know, for example, on this green wood, you can see how it's a little bit more flat across versus on the York, it may be recessed or bumped out. So, like, that's an example of a Seneca, and you can see how that second half is kind of pushed back. The front could then come up on the second floor, too.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the commission? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Longmire.
Thank you. Probably more for staff rather than for you. Are we concerned about the lack of a red light and people pulling out onto New Shackle with only one point of, of entry and exit to the neighborhood? 103 homes, and a lot of them, I love to hear the larger sizes, but larger sizes means larger car count. Is there a concern about the, the traffic impact and getting out onto that road?
Traffic impact study was done previously, and it was determined that an extended left-turn lane into the development was kind of the extent of the, the roadway improvements required of this development. Beyond that, no other improvements were identified in that previous study.
Okay, so, that takes care of on Shackle Island. What about coming out of the neighborhood? How long is the left turn, is it just a two-lane entry and exit?
I believe there's a, a right and a left turn lane out, but it's been a while since I've, I've looked at these documents, at, at the plans and whatnot, but that is something we can certainly kind of flesh out during the construction plans, the middle.
I would be interested in, in knowing what the, the stack count is for a left turn out, because I, for one, would hate to be trying to get out at 7:15 in the morning if there's only a, a two or three-car left turn out of the neighborhood.
Yeah, the, I, I don't know that the level of service is a, a big issue there considering, you know, the distance between the traffic signals and whatnot. There, there's considerable amount of traffic, but it's typically free-flowing in that area. But that's, that's something we can revisit.
Okay, thank you.
With the construction plans.
All right. Any other questions, or the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So moved? Todd? Okay. Is there any special comments that need to be put on this?
No, this is one, you know, you could limit it to just this, this builder, but I re, really, there's no particular reason to. So this would put this new requirement, which some of these things are pretty, pretty good, that I guess American Home for Rent's already agreed to, so if American Home for Rent keeps it, or something doesn't work out and they keep it, then they're gonna have these added things onto it, which would, would be better than where we're at right now. So I don't know that I would limit it to just this, this particular builder. Hopefully, it works out. I think that'd be good, but if it doesn't, then these changes, I think, would be positive for the current owner, or you all, or any other developer. These would be good, better than what we have right now.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we could, we could do that, because in the meetings that we had with Ryan, they wanted to do that, but they're, the seller has to agree to that, which American Home for Rent was not agreeable, so that would, that would kinda ax it. But I think in talking to them, it's their intentions, but, you know, there isn't any guarantee, you know, that we would have, but we don't really have a guarantee right now, other than, well, we know what American Home for Rent is planning on doing. But, so, I don't think we could, we couldn't put that stipulation on there without it being voluntarily maybe done.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Kerr. Do I have a second?
Second.
I, I was just gonna make just one small in a note on the, the rental portion of that. So, the, the non, the ability for these homes not to be sold as rentals is something that we take very serious from even a corporate level. So for example, we had an incident in, it was 2019, one of our Nashville communities, we actually found out that a group of individuals had purchased these for investment properties. And whenever someone goes through our mortgage process, you're actually required to do a disclosure of stating, hey, is this an investment property? Is this for rental? And they had clicked that it was for, I'm sorry, it was for purchase for them to live in as owner-occupied. We actually uncovered this, reported it to the FBI. So it's something we take extremely seriously, and we, we do not allow.
All right. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, all right? So with that being said, we'll do a roll call vote.
Motion to approve, passed with nine yeses.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a site plan for the Best Buy at 1018 Andrews Run. They have a waiver request. Let's see, what else does it say? The parcel number is 144-102.01. Caitlin, again, you're up, so.
Thank you. So Best Buy will be moving into the former Stein Mart at 1018 Andrews Run in the green within the Glenbrook Plan Development. The Glenbrook Master Plan includes approved design guidelines and a master signage plan. The, on the number one on the building-mounted signs for the development guidelines, it calls for only raised letters attached to the building wall or recessed into the building that shall be permitted. Best Buy is requesting two waivers tonight. The first waiver pertains to the blue facade, as shown, which involves painting the existing brick exterior. There is no building inset proposed unlike the other signage in the development. Staples requested and received a waiver from Planning Commission in 2004 for a red EPHAS inset on its signage. Staples is governed by a separate master's signage plan within the development. Also, on the slides, are other signs governed by the same master's signage plan as Best Buy? Some of these are Crunch Fitness, Shoe Carnival, and Marisa's. Also included are examples of other signage within the development that are governed by the other master's signage plan, which include Target, Kohl's, Ulta, Home Goods, Ross, and Kirkland's. The second waiver pertains to the blue background proposed on the monument signage. The two existing monument signs for the development on this master, on this, on the green area that was, that was on the left side, currently feature white backgrounds on the tenant panels. Best Buy is proposing the blue background with white lettering and its yellow price tag logo. As part of the review for the signage request, design review was being considered. It's worth noting that the other two tenant monument signs within the development are governed by separate master's signage plan and feature multicolored signage.
All right, thank you very much, Caitlin. Do we have anybody from the company? Will you please step up, say your name?
How you guys doing? My name's Shakir Hussein. I'm with Easy Signs, 20626 Avery Point Drive, KD, Texas. Came out for this. Basically, Best Buy, when they signed a lease with the landlord here, they were not under, they were not aware that there was a master's sign plan here. They spoke to the landlord, they... They spoke to the landlord, they put their sign exhibit into the lease as well, the landlord approved it. And when we went into permitting, it came back that, hey, you know, this is governed under a master sign plan. And so Best Buy is looking for a variance, because they kind of feel a little bit hoodwinked by the landlord, not knowing that their property is governed by a master sign plan. So they want to see what they can do to try and salvage this deal versus possibly going somewhere else.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
That's basically it. And Ms. Caitlin basically gave the gist of it. They're trying to, you know, keep their, their blue color as a background. They're going away from, you know, the larger tag, which is their main identifier from a distance. So they're really hoping to do like the blue color on the background, and then as well as the monument sign. They feel that with the color of the building itself, having white letters is not going to be visible as well, especially in the daylight and direct sunlight. It tends to wash out lighter colored walls and lighter colored signs.
Okay. Anybody from the commission have questions from Best Buy? Go ahead, Todd.
Yes, couple, couple of questions. One, the blue facade. Now, you may not be able to speak to the granularity of what I'm trying to get at here, but is this trying to get a blue facade and let's just say that we go a different direction on that, and it's a different color? Is that something that Best Buy has been able to work around in different communities? That's the first question. And then I guess, and let me ask this of Mr. Chairman here. We're looking at these as two separate waivers, right? We're going to vote on them separately?
It's two separate waivers. We can, we can go either way, we can vote for them separately, or we can separate them out.
I, I would separate them out.
It'll be the leisure of you guys.
Yeah, I would propose we separate them out.
Okay.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
So, um, Best Buy recently went through like a rebranding. I'm sure if you guys have seen some of the other locations around, their letters typically tend to be yellow with also a big tag, is, is what they call it. As far as the, the new sign type that they're proposing, they only really build like three or four locations a year, and so they've been very diligent about trying to get into places where this is allowed, so that they don't have to go through a variance process and things like that, of that nature. So as far as them having done different color facades or going with different options, I can't speak to that. We've been working with Best Buy nationally for five years, doing all of their retrofitting, upgrading their signs to, you know, LED versus neon, and then their new locations, and we have yet to come across this issue. They've just typically been pretty diligent about it by proposing the sign package in the lease and speaking to the landlord and things like that, of that nature. And typically, the landlord is aware of any master sign plans and, before they go into it.
So let me continue my question here. Let's just say that the blue facade is not a, not a go. Have you tried to blue halo lights over the letters?
Um, that's not something that we've proposed with them. I'm not sure as to the sign code if they would allow like a halo lit or not. I think one of the other concerns is also pricing. They're trying to be a little bit more cautious about their build-outs, just with the state of retail and Amazon kind of taking over. I think they're just trying to look at different ways to, to try and optimize their budget.
Ms. Silkwood, go right in.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate it.
Just a quick question. So I see that you are proposing to paint the brick blue behind the Best Buy sign. Can you walk me through how that blue paint would be removed by chance if Best Buy were to eventually move out of this building?
So typically, you would just repaint over it. It being brick, there's no real environmentally friendly way of removing paint that, that I know of. Best Buy typically will stay in a property ten, fifteen, twenty-plus years. So I personally haven't encountered that. I, I just can't speak for them as to what they would do. And typically, the resurfacing of the, the space is typically done by the new tenant, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
I would say that, you know, the issue I have with the painting of the brick is just what you said, because you're dealing with a cream-colored brick, if you're looking at the, the Stein Mart building right there. That would be hard to match. You would have to have an awfully big sign to cover it up again. And that is my, one of my major issues with painting of the brick, is just what would happen in ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road if Best Buy were to move, and then we're left with something that, you know, doesn't really meet our Hendersonville standards?
Completely understandable.
I'm going to jump in real quick. I have one question for you. You're a sign guy by your own admission.
Yes.
And, you know, Mr. Kerr brought up halo lighting, and you mentioned that that could be expensive, but you haven't explored that yet. With you being a sign guy, what would you recommend in lieu of painting the brick and giving them the blue background?
So there's a few different options. They were thinking about potentially placing some type of material on the wall. If you guys would be open to, this obviously has like a, a secondary option, maybe like an aluminum backer panel that they could do, maybe not the full size, but it seems like they would need the full size to really capture their brand. But it would be like an aluminum cabinet that would be placed on the wall, which is relatively more expensive than, than a halo lit, to be completely honest with you. But I think the idea is to try and keep the brand standards, whereas a halo lit will help at night. But at night, your sign is going to be shining bright anyway. It doesn't matter really what the wall color is. It's more during the daytime, when you have direct sunlight bouncing off the face, the white faces of the sign, it's going to reflect and becomes a little bit hard to read.
Understood. Okay, Ms. Lattimer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for, for being here tonight and taking the questions, and I'm very excited about Best Buy coming to Hendersonville. I'd rather go to Glenbrook than go to Madison. I'm concerned about a large rectangle of blue. Not known by you, but this group has had a lot of discussion about big blue rectangles at Walmart. And while I appreciate branding and the need to be consistent and wanting to be visible, the reality is it's 2025, and nobody's looking for the sign. People are looking at their phones. If they don't know where Best Buy is, they will find it. Best Buy will find them on their phone without any problem. Along the lines of Commissioner Silkwood's questions about painting the brick, if I can get past the big blue rectangle, which is hard for me, and just think about how you actually would, would install a big blue rectangle, the paint is a concern for me. Not only because it leaves us with something that is almost irrevocably blue now, without the next tenant having to take on some pretty big challenges, but I also wonder what that's going to look like in ten years. That's a big exposed area. There's not a lot of, of landscape around there that's going to buffer that from sun and wind and rain and, and the tornadoes that are growing more and more fond of our area. So I, I wonder what that paint would look like. And since this is a new branding approach for Best Buy, there's really nothing that Best Buy can point to to say, here's a sign that's ten years old or fifteen years old. So the upkeep on that is a concern. But my major concern is a big blue rectangle and a sign that is so obviously different from all of the other frontage signage on that entire shopping center. If it was a two or three-store center, you might say, well, there's going to be some variation. There are a lot of businesses there that have all adhered to the sign requirements that have been laid out. So I'm, I, I don't know if you have any comment to that, or anything that you can speak to around the aging of the brick, but I am, I'm having some real struggles with this one.
Great concerns. As far as the, the maintenance and upkeep, that's typically part of our scope as well. So typically, Best Buy, every three to five years, they go in and they do like an entire maintenance overhaul of all of their properties in terms of parking lot lights, if that's part of their scope, all of their wall pack lights, because there tends to be like wall pack lights around the building, the lighting of the signs as well themselves, and then any other maintenance issues with the building. They tend to be pretty good about upkeep in, in that regard. That, that's really all I can speak for, in regards to that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barton, you have questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo kind of what they're saying. I think paint's a, a bad idea. I'm sorry, I missed it, thanks for pointing that out. Because of everything that they said, it fades. The tenant may not be here, you may not be maintaining the sign. There's a lot of things that, that can vary. The halo lights isn't a, a great idea to me, because when you have it above a brick surface, it brings out the reveals and shadow lines, and it doesn't look good. This shopping center's on Indian Lake. It's kind of our jewel, and that's why we have the signage thing. Do you think your, your guys, your client would be acceptable with, if we're admitting to the blue, if you had a mechanically fastened, UV, UV-resistant black backdrop, and then the white letters and stuff that you're proposing?
Yeah, that's definitely something that I can approach them with. They haven't gone through the exercise of looking at pricing and, and things along those, those lines to see if that's something that would work for them financially. I, I know that they had mentioned something about if they may, are not able to do blue, if you guys would approve possibly painting the entire building a little bit darker color to have some type of offset, if that comes down to like a, a last resort. But then once again, it being brick, painting brick is kind of a concern.
Anything else, Commissioner Martin? Barry, you have a question?
Couple of questions. What the, this is more for staff. The red that is behind the staples, is that paint?
Yes, I believe that is, is paint. It, it's on EFS, and it, it had to come back before the Planning Commission in two thousand and fourteen? Two thousand and four? So in two thousand and four, the Planning Commission approved that with a, with a waiver. And that is EFS, that's not, not brick, and it is in an inset. So there's a defined EFS inset with, within that. And I would mention just, in looking, if you're looking to do something behind there with blue that's not paint, it, it can't be anything that's like a cabinet, because cabinet signs aren't, aren't allowed within that, within that area. So it couldn't be something built up that's there. If it was anything, it just would have to be some kind of flat, you know, material that was up against the wall.
Would you be able to define like the thickness allowed? Because we can do something that's like two inches thick, it would have no illumination coming through the blue. It's just to give it a little bit more durability versus laying a bunch of ACM panels or something across, across the building?
Yeah, I think anything that's going to be revealed above the brick is going to be considered a cabinet. So it's, you know.
Understandable.
Yeah, anything that wouldn't.
Just an inch or two inches?
Yeah, it would still be a cabinet. It would be considered a cabinet sign for the master sign plan and the way it works. That's why I like, all of these are supposed to be channel letters, which are like you see Maurice's or like Stein Mart was. They're just individual letters. And what a cabinet sign is, like, a lot of the signs that are just plastic, and it's just like a cabinet, and it's one big face, and it's just, might have a little bit of reveal to it, but it's kind of flat and just backlit. So that's kind of what a cabinet sign is. But all these types of requirements are that higher-end kind of feel. And, and that's one of the things from the staff standpoint, because we struggled with it. We tried to, we, once we were aware of it, we let, we let them know that the blue wasn't allowed. But we looked and tried to get creative to see what we could do at the staff level, and we just weren't comfortable, because as we look at, as we look at Glenbrook, the Glenbrook Shopping Center, years ago, I wasn't here, but years ago when this was approved, and the city kind of went beyond three, Highway three eighty-six, you know, north of it, when they did that, it was kind of a big risky thing to do. And part of that, when I look back at when that was approved, the promise to it was that it was going to be a high-end, high-quality retail shopping area. And I think it's one thing, as we look at this, you know, whatever the resolution of it is, is this and other things that we look at, that not only do we maintain the high quality of the buildings and the facades, but also the signage is important as well to, to do that. So, and it's something that certainly, certainly the staff understands as we're looking at these things, and somebody might look at what we're talking about here this evening and think that's extremely nitpicky or, you know. But it's, but it's these kinds of things where we look at it diligently, look at these, and try to find good outcomes, but that we have a high bar. It's all of these hundreds of little bitty things that set our community apart from other communities. In the retail areas, it's no different, because the key to what we want is Stein Mart has been vacant for quite some time, but because, because the design review of the building and the development and the landscaping and everything was such that our buildings, when they are, the few times they are vacant for some period of time, they look good vacant, or they look good full. In a lot of other communities, commercial areas where commercial properties come vacant, they don't look good, you know, when they're, when they're vacant. But in our community, they look good when they're full, but also if they have to be dormant for a period of time, they're, they're, they continue to look, to look good. So I kind of wanted to explain that, and, you know, on, on how the staff was looking at it, and one reason it's here this evening, that we just couldn't, we couldn't quite, we couldn't quite feel comfortable to do it. And we wanted more eyes on it to, to make this determination as well.
So the other questions that I had, if, if the paint is applied to the brick, is there going to be any type of transition from where the paint stops and the brick goes out, just the way it is today? Is there any transition around that, or is it just, there's going to be a paint line that just stops?
I believe right now with the way that the surface is, it's just one continuous surface. There's no divots.
You're not proposing to add anything, or it's just this part's reg, unpainted brick, and then here's the, the brick right up next to it? So there's, there's no transition material between the two?
As of right now, there's nothing proposed, but I know Best Buy is open to, if you say, hey, you know what, you guys can add some type of architectural features or something along those lines. That's something that they may be open to. They're just, at this point, they're saying, we want blue, let us know what you guys would allow us to do.
And then the, the last question is, I'm not, for, for whatever reason, I'm not understanding, the white letters are going to be channel letters, correct?
Correct.
The only thing that we're really having the issue is the blue background behind it.
Correct.
That's correct. And the, the square footage of it, even if you included the blue, is okay.
Yes, it's within.
So the only real issue is the blue? Got it?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Mr. Hasty has patiently waited, so go right ahead, Charles.
Yeah, I kind of agree with a whole lot of the comments that are made. We want to maintain the integrity of that development. But if you look at the existing conditions, that ain't the integrity we want, and it's been there for a while. Sometimes we're better off with one bird in the head and two in the bush. We may be worried about ten years from now, but we don't want this to look there ten years from now. You know, I, I'm okay with that sign and maybe getting it back to the staff, and the staff work with them. And I think with the, all the comments that are made, the staff can mutually work out a deal with them that, that I would be acceptable with. But I think for the community, we need a vacant building occupied. Even if it's blue paint and white letters. My opinion.
Good. Mr. Martin, I saw you.
Yeah, so I really want this tenant, they'd be a great anchor tenant, and the location that they're looking at is at the end. I agree with everything that you've said. Looking at the other pictures, there's EFS on this project. What I would propose to you guys is have the blue made of the two-inch EFS, that's acrylic. That's, that's already in, on the project, and have that be the blue background. That can be adhered, just like EFS on other parts of the project. That's your blue background, it's not part of the signage, and then you mount your channel letters to the EFS itself. You could actually do one-inch EFS. Would that be a good compromise? All right.
Okay.
Well, look at Barry.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were looking at staff or if you're looking at the commission.
I'm talking to you guys.
Okay. Any question or any comments or anyone? I think Charles agrees with you.
The background you were talking about?
He was making an EFIS background about one inch thick with the blue and the blue being on EFIS.
It has the acrylic coating, the same acrylic coating that's on other, the other EFIS on the project.
Only the staples though?
Yes.
But now the one thing is recall what they said, Staples is a different sign ordinance altogether, different part of the, you know, the development.
Right, but we're taking these separately.
Well, they're just a different set of rules. So you're convoluting two different sets of rules.
Right. I'm trying to reach a compromise. There's EFIS up above it. I know it's, it's not strictly adhering to, to the sign ordinance that's in place there, but it's a compromise, I think, that will have a tenant in there that will be there for a while and will bring cross-traffic to, to support the other businesses.
If that's something that they can agree with, I'd be okay with it.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna jump down. I saw Mr. Kerr go right ahead, speak up.
Question. What was agreed on when the proposal was made for Best Buy to, to come to Hendersonville? Was that not discussed in terms of the color of the sign or the background?
I know they spoke to the landlord and they, typically when they sign a lease, they submit the sign plans that were submitted to the city with the landlord and they also have to approve it. That's something that most major retailers do just because they really care about their brand standards. They're not trying to make very many changes, right? And typically, what they'll do is they'll look at the code of the city and then they'll also look at what the landlord requirements are. And then they kind of mesh the two together and see if it's feasible for them in terms of branding-wise and signage-wise. I know that's obviously not the main sticking point of why they would come to a retail shopping center, generally speaking. But they did propose it to the landlord and the landlord did not mention anything about an MSP or an MSA. And I think that's where the contention between Best Buy and the landlord is. Just in my experience, permitting signs like all across the country, the landlord is usually the one that tells me as, you know, the guy doing the permits, whether there is an MSA or an MSP unless it's some, they just bought the property and they just didn't happen to see it.
Right. Have we heard from the landlord at any point in this discussion? I know this is my second meeting.
No, we, we have not. And I think as you can see in that picture on the top left, I believe the, I believe the build-out of the construction of the conversion has already started. So I think Best Buy is already.
I understand that, I'm just trying to understand how we got to this point.
Yeah, no. When, when, when Best Buy contacted us, which was the first that we had had with it, exactly what we're explaining tonight is exactly what we've said the whole time. And we've dealt with maybe three or four people from Best Buy, but from the get-go, when we saw what they were wanting to do, we explained to him that the blue just wouldn't, that was not going to work.
Are you acting on behalf of the landlord or behalf of Best Buy or both?
On behalf of Best Buy.
Okay. It, it may be healthy to hear from the landlord here because really that's the missing piece of this to me is, I just want to understand how we got here.
Right.
And I understand that you're trying to, you know, you're the sign vendor, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand. Best Buy has the blue, that's, that's kind of their thing, right? And then we agreed, or the landlord agreed to let them not put blues, is that right? Or the landlord agreed to let them put blue?
That is my understanding, yes.
But the landlord is the one that should understand the stipulations and requirements of that sign, right?
When there's an MSA or an MSP involved, yes. Typically, the way that most shopping centers work is the landlord will have its own set of requirements and then the city will have their own set of requirements as well. And the landlord will say as long as our requirements don't conflict with what the city is allowing. And kind of the purpose of Best Buy submitting the signage package into the lease is the landlord is going to say, yes, this is allowed or this is not allowed. And a lot of times with, with bigger retailers that are coming in, the landlord is allowed to make their own stipulations based off of who they're going to bring in too, right? So that's kind of why they're putting it into the lease so that way the landlord then can't later say, oh, well, our sign plan that the landlord has created doesn't allow this type of sign or these different types of finishes, et cetera, right? And at that point typically is when the landlord would say, hey, there's an MSP, which is typically an agreement between the landlord and the city on what is going to be allowed in a specific area. Because from my experience, it's kind of a little bit of what the landlord wants and a little bit of what the city wants and it's never as restricting as either or. It's usually like a compromise.
That's helpful. Now, have, did the landlord express concern or bring that to staff that?
Oh, let me let, let me let Caitlin address that.
We have not heard from the landlord at all. He has been, they've been included on any correspondence we've sent back to Best Buy, especially since they've submitted, so they are aware, but we have not heard from them.
So there's, there's been no discussion with the landlord that this group may have some reservations about the, or the, the blue facade?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, to table this particular waiver and have the landlord come back to the next meeting. Let's talk about how that actually worked.
Well, Mr. Kerr, I will, I, I hear what you say, I respect what you're saying, but I don't believe we have the option of, of doing that right now. I think they, the landlord or Best Buy, and if you look at the condition that the building's in right now, Best Buy is knee-deep into redoing this. They've signed a lease.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not trying to be the sticky wicket here. They should have done their due diligence, okay?
Okay.
Best Buy is a great big company all across the country. When they sign leases, they should be reading these things.
I'm just trying to find a path here, just like you are.
I hear that. So now the next thing is from the committee, you know, there's things, we are limited. They have things that they can ask for and request. They've obviously not done that yet.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Evans, you have comments?
Yes, sir. Can we pull up the proposed monument sign, the slide?
We haven't even gotten to that one yet.
There it is, right there. Not to belabor the point, but our answer lies right there. Thank you.
I hear what you're saying. They're asking to be very different. So, you know, and as a committee, we have the option of saying, we may allow that, we may not allow the building. So we can keep them two very specific, separate things or we can combine them. And right now, we have some people on the committee that are going both ways. Some want the building to be changed, some don't. So I'm going to listen to the rest of the comments. Vanessa, you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, and this kind of goes a little bit with what Director Free said and what our chairman just said. I don't think I'm misreading the situation when I say that Best Buy wants to move from Rivlegate. They've had some problems there as far as I know in terms of, you know, crime and whatnot. So I feel like we have the leverage here in this situation, frankly. And I would be okay with a monument sign with the blue background, as long as you all would remove the blue facade behind the building mounted. Thank you.
So, any other commissioners have comments, questions? Anything you want to throw out there? Go ahead, Ms. Slattery.
Can't help myself, thank you. You said this is a fairly new branding. We're getting away from the big yellow tag that said Best Buy in black and going to this. Again, tremendous respect for the work that goes into branding and consistency in your branding, but it's still very new. So there's not a lot of precedence around this branding yet. I, I would simply throw out the, the suggestion that we think long and hard, that maybe you sit down with your client and think long and hard. I'm not a sign person, but white letters with a good blue background or a blue border on each letter, you know, something that gives you the blue behind the white, allows it to be visible during the day, still keeps some of that branding in place, but then also respects what we work very hard to maintain in our community. So that would be my only, and I promise I think that's it.
Okay. So, we can entertain motions and we can move forward with this. I'm going to ask Keith a question. You know, Mr. Kerr brought up, he would like to see this brought back at another time with more thought from the landlord and the tenant, okay? From my understanding, if that would have to be a request from the tenant's representation, is that correct? Or can we table it, enforce it later?
You can, you can, but I think in this particular situation, Best Buy is in a hardship situation created by their agreement that they had, that they thought they had it covered and it's not. So I don't know, I don't know that involving the landlord is going to get a particular, you know, a particular solution.
Right.
You know, I think, you know, it's some, it's some, and it's something staff has tried to, tried to work it through and with some specific direction. You know, we could, we could come up with something from the planning commission, you know, if there was some specific direction, kind of like what Michael was talking about. You know, there's, there's some things we could look at doing on that, but no, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think having the landlord, having them then come back, I think we'd still be faced with what we're dealing with, dealing with right now. Because the, the gentleman here is the sign guy for Best Buy and whatever the solution's going to be, you know, whether you guys approve a limited version of what he's wanting, they're wanting, or the whole version, then he's going to have to be the gentleman that's going to have to figure out, execute, you know, what that, what that's going to be. I, I hope that makes, in, in some cases, I think it would make sense to just defer it and to get additional information, but I think the information we have here is pretty much, A, there's, for whatever reason, there was confusion between Best Buy and the landlord. Best Buy thought it was all covered. The landlord, for whatever reason, didn't realize there were limits. I, I can't really address that. And the communication that once the city was involved in it was, hey, this blue isn't going to work, it's going to be a problem. And, but you gotta, gotta realize too, by the time Best Buy engaged, not just this gentleman, but we had like three or four other people, we've worked pretty high up through Best Buy's executive branch, I believe. And all the interaction with that, but from the get-go, they'd already done their lease, all their signing, so they've already had that agreement. So they were kind of surprised. And so, and then what they're here this evening is trying to figure out, okay, how, let's make sure we exhaust every opportunity, you know, that we tried to get the blue on the, on the back of the, of the sign.
So if, if I might, do you have the authority to make these modifications? I like, I like Wendy's suggestion, put blue letters around the white.
It's something that we can propose to Best Buy. We can't say, hey, you know what, this is what you're going to get, basically, unless it's something that, you know, comes from the, the commission. If you guys say, hey, this is what you guys are going to get, then that's obviously what it is. But I think the idea is to try and get either the, the blue background approved or what options you guys might potentially allow. Like Mr. Martin recommended, potentially resurfacing part of it with EFIS, maybe doing some type of backer panel, et cetera. I think the idea was we can go through the, the variants, go through this hearing, see what you guys had to say, whether you guys would allow it or not versus submitting six or seven different brand books to the city and then having all six or seven hit you guys at multiple different times.
Well, let me ask you this. So, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, we could put up some proposals, the, the border of the letters and maybe the backing for the blue, blue facade, but we don't, we don't have them in front of us to look at.
Correct.
What that looks like. So it sounds like to me, we're going to need to, to defer this to where we either give them a couple of options tonight, what they can do, or have them come back with their architecture, design and let us look at it and see if this committee believes that it's, it's the right move for the city. I have concern about the blue in general. The monument, I'm not concerned about that. I think that that's, to me, we got a compromise somewhere and that maybe is the compromise. But in this current format, I, I'm, I'm having a problem with that blue facade, but I'm, I'm open to solutions here to try to find a way to do that. But to talk about it in an abstract.
Understandable.
Versus seeing it, to me, is a little hard. So I'll leave it at that.
Let me jump to Barry. Barry, you've been waiting patiently, go right ahead.
I was just going to say, it sounds to me like we got a lot of disagreement up here. I plan to vote to approve for both, both variances for a couple of different reasons. One, I understand this is a different sign regulation. I understand there's different ownership groups in the shopping center because one group owns the Kroger building, another group owns this end down here. But in my mind, it's Glenbrook Shopping Center. And we already have Staples with a red background. And so to tell Best Buy they can't do it seems to me that we're being picky. And I fully respect everyone else's opinion, this is just my opinion. I, I don't see an issue with having the blue background own the monument signage because it's already there on the other shopping centers. So I think we're just following through with what's already there. And it, I am extremely happy that Best Buy is coming, they're going to add to our tax base, they're going to fill a vacant building that has not been filled. And think about Sprouts chose to go to Rivagate instead of going in this particular space. So Best Buy does have options. They could go to Galton, one of the new spaces up there. So I really would like to see them in the shopping center and, and with all due respect of everyone's different opinion, that's how I plan to vote this evening.
Make the motion, I'll second.
Yeah. Well, give me one second because we had some other people. Mr. Martin, no question? You done?
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to vote? Okay. And one more thing, Keith wanted to say something, so go ahead, Keith. I cut you off.
Yes, I, I just wanted to, if, if you, if you decide that, if you, if you make the determination that no blue on the back, then as far as the letters themselves, themselves go, it could be, it could be any color. So that could be blue, yellow, red, or I think you talked about an outline with that. It could be, as long as within the channel letter, then that could be any specific color. That wouldn't be anything that, that they would need a, need a variance on. I just wanted, I wanted to mention that.
Appreciate it. So I heard people start mentioning that they wanted to strike a motion, so what's the motion?
Are we splitting it into two?
Well, I'm sure the motions will, we will hear that.
So I make a motion that we approve the variants as requested and that they will work with staff to get the approvals.
And that's both the monument sign and the building sign?
Both monument and building signage.
Yes. So.
That's not my motion.
It's not?
No. My motion is to approve the variants. The way it is here, they'll work with staff. Hopefully the, the painting and all will, will be fine, but we already have painting on the target, on the Staples. So yeah, my motion is to approve the variants the way it was submitted, both, both the building sign as well as the monument sign.
So you're, just so I understand, you're combining the two?
Yes.
You do not want to vote separate on those in your motion?
It's your emotion.
It's my motion. No, I'm, I'm, I'm making, I am.
Making the motion to combine the two.
So we have a motion and we have a second. So I'm going to be very specific and try to make sure everybody understands. Motion is to accept the building, painting the brick blue as a background to the white letters, okay?
They'll be channel letters, correct?
Yes, they are channel letters.
Lit channel letters like.
Individually mounted letters, correct? Yes, sir.
And the second part of that motion is to accept the monument sign with the blue background, white letters, okay, and the little gold price tag on the right-hand side. And that is against what all the rest of them are with the white background. So those, that's the motion as it stands, okay? So now, everybody understand it? Anybody needing more follow-up to it?
So I'm clear. The first waiver is to allow the blue paint and that we're sticking to that.
That's a waiver to allow the blue paint painted onto the brick with the white channel letters on top of that.
Okay, got it. So there's, we're not offering any modifications to waiver one?
No modifications as his motion stands. Now understand, you don't have to vote for it.
Right, no, I understand. I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah.
We're, I'm just trying to find a path here, you know, to get, get something going here. Okay, thanks.
Now, listen, you're going to be voting on this motion. Now, listen, you're going to be voting on this motion, you can vote it down, and there can be another motion, so understand that. And everybody understands. Everybody ready for a vote? Let's go ahead.
But this doesn't say painted, this says Best Buy is going to have blue background.
Beth, it's a roll call vote, so it's waiting for you.
Motion to approve was denied with three yeses and six nos.
So now, with that being said, we can open up for any other motions? If there's another motion, and there's another variance, we're welcoming that right now.
All right.
Mr. Martin, you got one to offer?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as submitted with staff comments, except no paint, no halo lighting.
No paint, what?
No halo lighting, no paint and no halo lighting, so just.
Yeah, the channel letters.
Just channel letters.
Yeah.
Of whatever color, as Keith said, whatever color.
And then staff will approve what they submit.
You're still doing it as, as a combined motion, both the frontage and the monument signage.
Okay, if you guys want to separate it, we can do the, the front signage first. Let's do that. Yeah.
So, I've heard a motion to approve it with exactly what has been presented by staff as the alternative, correct?
Yes, the waiver requested.
The waiver requested with the blue paint? On the brick?
No paint. You can have the blue, it can't be paint on the brick, it has to be mechanically pasted.
Okay, well.
But if you put, but you can have a blue back behind it, it just can't be painted.
Correct. But now, I'm not sure staff suggested that as an option, because of what I heard Keith say is, anything behind it is going to be considered a cabinet, is that correct?
It would be, but with this being a planned development and this being a waiver, the planning commission, if you chose to do it, then we could do it, even if it, even if it's not too thick, it would still be a cabinet, but if that's what the planning commission wishes to do, there is the flexibility to be able, be able to do that.
That's what I'm proposing.
But are you proposing it as a cabinet, because I'm hearing him say that it's specifically called out that cabinets are not allowed? I don't know that you want to carry that through forever, I'm just asking you. It's your motion.
I would just, I, I don't like the word cabinet, I understand what the cabinet is, but what we're doing is not a cabinet.
Right.
As far as signage goes, this is a substrate that's applied to it.
I like that.
Yeah, it's a substrate, it's.
That's better.
Yeah. So, a blue substrate, not paint, and the, the graphic in the blue proposed as it is.
Okay.
Okay.
With the decorative trim around it or something.
Yeah, yeah, and staff comment, staff can handle that.
Only the sign, only the frontage, not the monument, right?
Not the monument.
Okay.
Yeah, we're only talking about the building signage.
So basically, you're still getting him what he wants, it's just not paint.
Correct.
It's, it's basically a substrate's what he said.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to try to repeat what he said. He's, he's saying, we're going to put a motion forward for the front of the building only, not the monument right now, it's going to have the white letters channeled, they're going to be on a blue substrate, no paint on the building, but it's a blue substrate that will be mechanically attached, and the building channel letters will be on top of that, and it'll have a nice edging between all of them.
Correct.
Correct?
That's it.
That's his motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Charles.
Let's get this, get it occupied.
Okay, so now, roll call vote.
I hope they'll go along, hope Dave's not wrong, hope they'll go, Best Buy go along with it.
Motion to approve passed with seven yeses and two nos.
Okay, so now, we have taken care of one half of this one, now the other half, is the monument sign.
I'll make a motion we approve the monument sign as presented, the waiver as presented.
Keith, I have one question before we go to there.
Okay.
The size of the, the portion of that sign, is it equally proportioned for each of the businesses? Is that norm?
I don't, I, I don't know, I don't think it's limited on that ground sign, the proportion of the size of it, you know, filling the whole space, I don't think that's.
I don't think it is.
There's not a limit.
It's up to the landlord, how he wants to divvy that up.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, is there a limit to how big that monument sign can be?
Yes.
Okay.
The size it is now.
And he can divvy that up however he sees fit?
The size it is now, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So we've had a motion, and we've had a second, okay, I, I forgot who's second, I know Charles was the motion, Mr. Martin was the second, now a roll call vote on this.
Motion to approve passed with nine yeses.
You worked hard for that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Best Buy, thanks for choosing Henderson.
I will, thank you.
Okay, and Keith would like to speak real quick, he wants to give us a summation of what we just did.
Yeah, I'll, let me give, let me give just a quick summation, so you go ahead and kind of put something together to send to us. So what was approved on the little ground sign that's up there, so that's approved as, as is. On the building sign, it's, that blue area can still be blue, but it's going to be a substrate that's going to be affixed to the, to the brick, and then we'll just need some type of decorative trim around that, and then your channel letters would all come off of that. So, if you can work something up and then send that to Caitlin, then we can get that, get that processed quickly.
I can do that.
Okay.
Would the, the EFIS route also be considered?
Yeah.
If they wanted to resurface it, would EFIS maybe put some decorating around it? Would that be something that would be considered?
Yes, we would, you, send us something, and then we'll respond real quickly to it, so we can get to the point where, where that you guys can move forward. But we'll, we'll work with, we'll work, staff will work with you to resolve it, to, to get it done.
Awesome, thank you guys so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Wendy, you have something?
Just one thing, back to Commissioner Kerr's comments, now that we've, we've approved this, we're finished, thank you. You're welcome to stay, it's riveting. I am, I am concerned that the landlord is not communicating the requirements that are on paper for his property, and this conversation can come up again, and I know Caitlin, you said that the landlord has been copied on all the communication, but has not communicated back. Is there something we can do to gently or not gently remind the landlord that, you know, use this as the lesson learned, that they must remember these things are a requirement, so that this doesn't wind up back in our lap with the next one?
Go right ahead, Keith.
Yeah, what we'll do with, with the way this has all turned out, I'll, I'll personally give a call to the landlord, and I, I'm sure after this has already happened, they're, they're very aware of what the process is through it, but I'll, I'll personally make a, a contact with the landlord, just to confirm that they fully understand.
All right, thank you. Okay, that was sausage right there.
If I'm Walmart, I'm not happy that they didn't get there for what he did.
Okay, next on the agenda is Drake's Creek Maintenance Complex, Hendersonville Parks and Recreation, location 131 Conway Twitty Lane Parcel, 159 D 012.01, okay? Lead Planning Staff Timothy, you're up tonight.
All right. Thank you Chairman, the, the Parks Maintenance Facility is located pretty much in the middle of Drake's Creek Park, it's four, four buildings, you can see some of the pictures there on pages two and three, four existing metal buildings. A lot of the traffic that goes through the park goes right by this, you can see that second picture on page two, the road goes right by those buildings, and you can look right into, into the facility, and those buildings kind of have that old metal look to them. So, the, the city is proposing to relocate the facility, the complex, to the southwest, kind of southwest area of the park, which, which is, which is a lot more remote. It's, it's going to be out of the floodplain, unlike the current facility, it would be less visible, have better opportunity for, for security, I think those, those buildings are where parks keep their, a lot of their field equipment, tractors and all kinds of things in there. And then there's, there's buildings, there'll be, there'll be five of those buildings, they will have black, black metal siding, so that location should, it is metal siding, but it's, it's relocating the existing metal sided facility to a much more remote and more secure and less flood, flood prone area.
Okay, is that it for them? All right, do we have someone from Parks, Mr. N, is it going to be Andy?
I will.
Okay, you go ahead, Andy.
I'd be glad to, what, what would you like me to speak on, Mr. Chairman?
You can tell us anything you want to.
We would like to put a neon sign that says Hendersonville Parks on the side of it. No, we're proposing black background, yes. I appreciate y'all taking this up, this is a project that is going to be to the benefit of mainly our maintenance staff and to the park, relocating this to behind Field 12 and 13 will get us out of the floodplain, which this facility has been underwater, up to six or eight feet of water in 2010, and underwater multiple times since then, and it is a 50-year-old maintenance facility, that's the oldest building of the, of the four, there is one that was built in 2017 that's in the bottom left, but the rest of them are 50 years old, and have some structural issues, and this area that we're going to move from could be used for much-needed parking, if anybody's ever tried to get out of Drake's Creek Park on a Saturday morning, you would understand that. We do have our friends from Wold, HFR, Jim Gilliam and Beth Meadows here, if anybody has any questions, and Trevor Cole is our maintenance superintendent. This project was funded in the FY25 budget, and we have been working on the design since July, and finally got to the point where we're ready to come to you all for this stage of the approval, so if anybody has any questions, we'll take them.
Well, I have no questions, but I do see, Mr. Martin has a question, go right ahead.
I was just going to let you guys know, this is an important product, project to the city, because it's impacting staff and the park's ability, I'm excited to see it here already, so I'm looking forward to this project passing.
Okay, Vanessa, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you for being here tonight, Director Gilli.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I, I much appreciate you all moving this, this building, I think it's going to make the parks, Drake's Creek Park, look a lot better, having that in a different location, and like you said, provide more much-needed parking, so I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Evans?
I just wanted to say thank you for getting it out of the floodplain, my company insures billions of dollars' worth of school property, and they always put the bus garage down in the low area.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
And it would be about as, it would be less expensive to repair the school buildings than it would be the buses, but nonetheless, you're doing a great thing by getting it up out of the floodplain.
We've gotten to the point now, every time it rains in the forecast, we move all the vehicles up to this area anyway, so.
All right, also, Charles, what you have to say?
This is owned a residential?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, I got one question, and then I'm going to shut up.
You go right ahead.
Does the metal building meet our design standards for that zoning area?
Well, you know, you're moving a metal building from one metal building to another metal, metal building in the park.
I agree, but if Mr. Marshall Developer comes in and says, I'm going to take this metal building down, I'm going to put this metal building over here, will he be allowed to do that?
Yeah, they would be if, if in their site plan process, the planning commission approved, so if they wanted to, it's possible, but they would have to get the planning commission to approve, and then in that particular case, if that happened, you know, if they had other metal buildings that they're going to be tearing down, and just putting it on a different part of the property, then the planning commission would just take that into account, doesn't mean it would be approved, but the approval tonight would be the understanding that there is a substantial visual blighted look now with metal buildings in the, in the center of the park, and then moving with these new modern metal, metal buildings would not, would not meet our exterior requirements, but is an understandable allowance, if that makes sense, you know, and that this is the city that's, you know, that's doing that. But approval, approval would be, approval of this site plan would be recognizing that, yeah, these are metal buildings, and that's not typically what, you know, we, we approve within this particular zone.
I just don't want us to open the door up for black metal buildings, when we put one over here for the, the football guy.
Right.
He's got black metal buildings and whatnot.
And I, I.
Don't open the barn door for metal buildings. Now, I'm going to vote for this, because I think it's a good idea to get it out of there, and get it up there, give these guys a good facility. But I, I think we need to be treading on deep water, that we're not giving a favorable treatment to our, ourself for a metal building that we wouldn't do for anybody else that's developing within the community.
Now, I, I totally, I totally understand that, I think situational, situationally, not just that we're removing the very visible old buildings, you know, to put these up, but where these are and with the color of it, and where they are behind the field, out there at the baseball field, that being black will help it sort of blend in a little bit, and especially at night, will help it, and, and Andy might could address it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just, we went kind of a similar process with the golf cart barn that came before you, you all, I believe, as a, kind of a staff level approval, when we rebuilt it, we went from a metal building to a metal building. Then, we had an opportunity to probably put a metal building in the park for an indoor baseball facility at Field Three, which is below this, we could have came and asked for a variance for that, but it was in a high-profile area that the Sumner County Schools was helping us build an indoor building in Drake's Creek Park, and it was decided that we would just do what was best visually and make it, what, 80% brick, and the rest stone, that came before you all too, so our, our thought process as a staff and inside this building is to make sure that we don't do things that put you all in a crack in terms of your future votes, and doing this, we felt was the right thing to do, so I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying there, for sure.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
I was just going to add, what, what the city's doing, there's a compelling interest is the term, for health and safety, and a residential developer would not be able to come up with a compelling interest, so I think we should be good.
All right, anybody else on the commission, any questions? Do I hear a motion from anyone? All right, we have a motion, I'll give a second. All right, roll call vote.
I'm going to vote for every metal building that comes here.
All right, thank you, Andy, we appreciate it.
Motion passed with nine yeses.
And one grumble.
All right, next we're to the staff level projects that have been approved, do I just need to read through these, do I need to say anything in particular?
No, yeah, you, you can, or you can just, you can ask me to go through them.
I'll let, I'll let Keith go through these.
The staff level projects that were approved, we got Caldwell Estates, Lot 14 and 15, re-subdivision, final plat, Millstone Phase Seven, Section One, revision, final plat, those are projects that are approved at the staff level. Other projects we're working on right now, this first one is Ferguson Acres, Lot Two, Amendment, and that's associated with that Donna Drive, the site plan that was approved by the planning commission, and part of the condition of that was that they needed to revise the plat, and so they're, that's what they're in the process of doing. Forest Retreat subdivision, lots two and three consolidation at 700 and 706 West Main Street, Hendersonville Football Stadium, that's still in, in process to the, for the site plan review, Merrell Hyde Magnet School Tennis Court, actually a pretty nice tennis court facility that they're adding over there, that's a project that we're in the process of reviewing as well, and those are all the, the projects. And those are all the, uh, the projects that are approved at the staff level and the ones we're currently reviewing. Mr. Chairman?
You got any other directors' comments that you'd like to?
Uh, no, I have, I have no comments for this evening, other than, um, uh, to remind everyone that on May the 20th, Tuesday, May the 20th, we're gonna have a work session, uh, we're gonna go over at six, I think it's at 6:30, and we're going to go over the proposed changes in the zoning ordinance, uh, and proposed changes to the subdivision regulations. Uh, we've tried to incorporate a lot of the things over the last, uh, last year, uh, that the planning commission has kind of brought to our attention, uh, as well as, uh, some different little loopholes that we found, and little fixes that we need to, uh, to make to tidy up our, uh, our, our zoning ordinance, uh, so we'll be, we'll be doing that on the 20th. That's probably gonna be, it's gonna be probably at least a two-hour meeting, uh, but we're gonna have everything ready to go, where we're gonna go through everything and at least give a executive highlight of, you know, all of the major changes that we're, uh, we're proposing.
Same 6:30 time?
Uh, 6:30 in this room, and we'll have some, we'll, we'll probably have something to eat as well. Yeah, I don't know if it, I don't know if there'd be water, it could be, it could be, that's possible.
John, you're lit up, do you have anything?
Thank you, sir, and don't throw anything at me for coming, uh, for bringing this sign thing back again, uh, but all we did there was protect the landlord's building. We didn't change anything, we didn't move anything, and far be it from me to design anybody's sign, and I don't think that's our business, nor do I believe that this sign thing should've ever come before us. To Commissioner Hasty's point, uh, and to the point about this sign thing, uh, if, if we do nothing else here, we've got to be consistent, we've got to be as consistent as possible, and, uh, I hope we try to do that in the future.
All right. Well, I want to say thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It was a longer night than I think we all expected, and a lot of grinding on that one subject matter altogether, but thank you, I appreciate it. Other than that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right, everybody say aye?
Aye.
Nays?